Oh, sorry.
Okay, call the meeting back to order at 7:05. Next item on the agenda, review and discussion of construction plans. Turn it over to the Huesman Group.
We've got handouts for y'all. Pass those out here first.
Well... While they're passing out, I'm gonna go ahead and pass out two. Last meeting, we had a question about accelerated testers. Mrs. Hale has researched and prepared just a little bit of explanation of accelerated testers, so I'm gonna give you guys that. And if you have, read through that and if you have any questions about... Sir? Give her a call. Please.
And I need another one.
Okay.
One more?
One more please. Wow, Greg, you want one? But would you like one? You can have one. Jody could close her eyes and see him. Of course she did.
Thank you.
They were there.
Okay, you guys, we're talking about Phase Two Wright Elementary. Peyton take over.
Just walk through these plans out quick, y'all have any questions? And please ask. It's good to be in front of y'all once again. Hopefully it'll make sense after walking through the site a little bit. This is our architectural cover sheet. So in the code search, the index sheets and all the normal cover sheet items. Next, we have our site plan. It's showing where we're gonna be working. South side of Wright. And then there's a little bit of flat work, which is the sidewalk that will be demoed in place. So that's what we're showing here. Our laid-out yard and office is gonna be standing in place.
Up there, it looks like the office area is covered and shaded, but that's not gonna...
On the right there.
On the right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not gonna be in Phase Two work.
That is, yeah.
All right.
That is a mistake there.
Yep.
They're wanting to include the girls' bathroom, but not the office.
Next, we've got all the symbols and a few of the notes that you can see in. Typical boilerplate stuff for the architectural drawings. Then we'll get into the demo sheet. So each note corresponds to something we're doing. We'll be removing finishes from the classrooms. We'll be doing some demo with the existing slab, which the shaded area represents, or new sewer lines. They'll be tied back into the sewer line that runs north-south roughly in this area. Then we'll be taking all the ceilings out, all of the VCT floors out of classrooms, pretty much just getting things like y'all have seen here in the past. Don't stop, we're going more into the demo.
Yeah. Any questions or comments so far?
Please stop.
I'm assuming same, but best best statement is we don't remove the room. It's all built same.
Yeah, we actually completed the survey here this last weekend. So we'll be getting that, getting that to y'all so you can keep it for your records. But all the west best statement and ADA inspection and all that good stuff. Next will be the dimension floor plan. We'll spend a little bit of time on here, but the finished floor plan is actually gonna be a little bit easier to see, just because all the dimension lines can kinda make it a little bit harder to see what's going on. It's showing the new restroom configuration in each pair of classrooms, which is slightly larger than what's existing. Then it's showing the workroom and faculty restrooms that'll be added to the west side of Phase Two. And it's showing the new custodial rooms that will be added as well in Phase Two. And showing the redesigned restrooms for accessibility and all those purposes. So we can spend a few minutes here if y'all like, or we can see better with the millwork and all that on this next finished floor plan. So this plan represents all the cabinets and the flooring, the ceilings, the wall panels, everything that's gonna be going into this phase. The yellow represents the cabinets. And there's roughly probably three different types of cabinets that will be in each classroom. We've got the typical lockers like y'all have been seeing so far in Phase One, where the kids will be hanging their backpacks and jackets. Then on the south side of, I guess, south side and the north side, we've got uppers and lowers. So it'll be handy for turning papers in and stuff like that. That's a big goal of the purpose of that. And then we've also got a sink in each classroom as well. So with additional counter space there. So we can look at the elevations of each one of these, each one of these cabinets if y'all like, just to see what the front of them looks like. That might be something that's better accomplished here in a few pages. Or would you like to go back and forth? The workroom has a whole bunch of uppers and lowers in it, in addition with some, a couple of large full height cabinets, space refrigerator and sink. And then, yeah, that's most millwork. There's an option for a shower cabinet for this, where this wall jogs out in these southern classrooms. And do roughly 12, 14 inches deep. It's still with the whole normal eight half by 11 papers, but it's something that we feel could be omitted if the budget were... So we just wanted to be the option for that.
I want the red writing mixed up.
Keep on moving here. This is our reflected ceiling plan. So it's showing where all the ceiling grid will be for Phase Two. It's gonna be a two-by-two grid, so it's going to be roughly what you've gotten here without the long straightaways. It's what we have in the rest of Phase One. It shows all of our LED block panel locations, all of the HVAC supply and return grills. And then in the hallways, it shows what portions are gonna be pitched versus flat. The restrooms have a mold-resistant vinyl coated tile for use in those areas. And, yeah, that's roughly, that's essentially what that shows. Shows all the different elevations on that as well, too, so we can make sure everything aligns the way it should. I'd like to not spend a lot of time on this sheet, but there's been some talk about what Phase Three could look like. And we want to keep that in mind as we're going into Phase Two, just so we don't close ourselves off in different decisions that are being made. So this is a representation of what Phase Two, Phase Three could look like. Nothing has been decided. There's no stamp on the plans. We're just wanting to, this for coordination purposes. And so what, there's been some talk about possibly restrooms? Or not restrooms, oh gosh. There'll be restrooms too, but these are classrooms. Yeah. In the courtyard area, there'd be some room for some restrooms in that area. And then a new administrative suite with a nurse's office and a secured entry where the old stage area was. So that's where we're at today on these. And we're accepting the change, but not without chow now. So it'll be brought back to y'all for approval.
I would assume those potential Phase Three classrooms, the center would be very similar in design.
Yes, sir. Yeah, as far as millwork and...
Restrooms between two classrooms.
Yes. Well, actually, probably not restrooms between... You'd probably have to lose a classroom that way. So that would be...
So restrooms would be outside too.
Yes, sir. Yeah, there'd be two restrooms right here that would actually be taking up part of that, one of the other rooms.
So probably in the future, along the bottom there where the restrooms are in the classrooms, those are probably gonna become pre-K and kinder.
That was my concern.
Yeah. Some of those classrooms you're building will probably be overkid classrooms.
Okay. And this layout could change, but...
It will change.
Yeah.
Sounds like a man that knows.
Our first thought out, we hope, nowhere maybe 70, 80% of the way there.
Makes sense.
Then moving on, it's showing elevations of the building. This is the south elevation that y'all will see from the playground. It is a similar design to what you're seeing on the north side of the building right now with the deepest synthetic stucco on that whole wall with the darker tinted windows up high. And then your existing steel doors that y'all have spent money on upgrading recently in that area. Same on the west and north elevation where the courtyard is. That will just be ceded over in preparation for Phase Three. We don't wanna be spending your money on something that will happen before our... So that's what we're looking at here. Next, we've got a few enlarged floor plans, just showing some of these restrooms that will be completed. Those walls we furred out will have tile like y'all have seen in Wright already. And a lot of, I believe, pretty similar to what you're seeing right now. And then there's the workroom, exit of all that we talked about earlier. This page represents a finished schedule of some of the finishes that have been selected. And this is the door schedule with all the door headings on it. Just to make sure we've got them all in place, so nobody skips a number or a heading. It's nice to have them all centralized. And there's some typical door elevations to see what the glass looks like in the door. It's what you got already with the narrow light.
Have we posted a walkthrough of Wright lately? I've just had it come up in the last week.
I don't think we posted one lately. Put one up.
Yeah.
We get one pretty soon. I think the last thing we posted was some pictures of the high school when we were over there that night.
Well, what we toured today was neat.
Yeah.
I'm real proud of that.
Yeah.
Looks too good and not...
Yes. Yep.
Hundred percent.
I'll get something out there.
Okay, thank you. And this will be restroom elevations now. We've got some of the common restrooms where you see multiple stalls in one elevation. And then we've also got some of the in-class restrooms shown there. There's, as Miss Chisholm said, there's going to be two toilets for the girls' restroom of the in-class restrooms. And there'll be a toilet and a urinal on the boy's side, so there should be plenty of those kids. And we've got some water fountains shown here. And on these two elevations, we're showing the main instructional wall with the marker boards and then the auxiliary, what's called auxiliary wall, which is the media opposite wall with tack boards and another board. Just trying to demonstrate that. Next, we have the elevations of the millwork of the classrooms. You'll see a lot of the lockers that you're used to seeing already in Phase One. This is the typical upper and lower configuration for Phase One. It does not fit on some of the southern wall classrooms, just because those walls do kinda have a little alcove. So we've adapted that for those. We've adapted that design that still has the same functionality there. For those areas, we're looking at more like a, call it A2 dot seven cabinet elevation. We've got a little bit of uppers and lowers. And then you've got the auxiliary A2 dot 11 elevation with the sink, or probably A2 dot 10 with the sink and a different wall. But the footage of cabinets should be pretty close to the same. Any questions on millwork now that I can kinda see it a little better? Okay. This is a lot of sections that are useful for our purposes, but aren't terribly interesting to look at. It just shows the way these walls are assembled and those for downs. There will be insulation? Yes. We're adding insulation where it's not. Like those, you currently don't have insulation, so, or cold air is able to come up through there and drop them in the classroom. There will be insulation added to the deck, which is insulated with your current resistance.
Okay. And that should help sound between the classrooms, correct?
Yes. Yes, these walls will be furred out with insulation, so the sound should not be an issue, because those walls are probably an inch and a half thick.
Yeah.
They're gonna end up being a long closer to six inches thick or so, and then they're gonna have insulation to make them more... Here's some more sections. One thing I'd like to spend a little time on here is this 12 dot 3 dot 6 section. There are some classrooms on the north side of the Phase Two area that may be bordering a hallway in Phase Three if this proposed elevation is, or this proposed plan is selected. In that case, if they would like to prepare for some windows, we will have it framed out for those to be cut in later. We didn't want to hamstring the design with placing the windows and decide, oh, we need a wall right here. So we wanted to go and prepare for the windows. And if those can be added to the hallway, then we will do so, but we didn't want to commit ourselves to a layout that hasn't really been fully developed yet. So that's something, the options are open there.
Good.
And those were the ones that were going to be done second, right?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay. So you did, you would have more time to decide what to do.
Yeah, and, yeah, that is fair. We'd probably be in the Phase Three designs a little bit.
Yeah.
We've got some typical handicap confines details, the next two pages. And then I think Joe's gonna take over and drop it.
Yep, before we get into my fun stuff, I'm the guy presenting and everything, but a lot of people put a lot of work into it. Our two, they've done a lot of work. Also, Jody and Alan's not here, but they've done an awesome job. Jody's getting really good at reading the plan.
You got a lot to add?
We met last Thursday. I mean, just so you guys know, we met last Thursday and went over these plans with Jody and Alan. And Jody had some very detailed, specific questions. She did a great job.
She's matching elevations to notes and she knows what she wants.
You guys don't steal her whenever we're doing this.
I don't know, there's some consultants I'm seeing, and I think she...
You shut your mouth.
See you later.
You don't have any kids that work in your office, so you can't... She wouldn't be happy to have you.
We can have a sandbox.
Yeah.
It's got some construction equipment in it.
They'll start a kindergarten just for you.
Yeah, and then I'm a detailed guy. I'm gonna try not to go too far, but if you want me to do it, just let me know. And then this is, this is the overview page. And essentially, we did everything exactly like we did Phase One. Reusing what we can. And then taking out the stuff that was, the original building, the plans were from 1958. And the other half was 1961. So you're gonna see a lot of colors and a lot of stuff that's gonna get taken out. And it's because things have just been growing for the past 70 years. And we're taking out a bunch of stuff that was left. And then, just like Peyton said, the gray is kind of the not now stuff. And then the color is the areas we'll be talking about. Some words to help it against the rain. Skip the next two pages. Here is the plumbing demo. This is mostly L pipe, so y'all see some stuff underground that we're leaving. And then, as a general rule, if you're not using any more than above the ceiling, take it out after asbestos stuff. And then, most of the plumbing work is around the new restrooms. And then all of your old boilerpipe work that is still there is getting taken down. And then the yellow is stuff that we're looking to reuse. We're looking to reuse that sewer pipe on that east side Peyton talked about. He took all my thunder there. And then, there's a, y'all had some sewer issues over here, so we're redoing the restroom on this list. And then y'all have a couple of water fountains that look good, so find their uses. Anytime you see a big block of text like this, this is just telling other people what to buy, manufacturers, to make a list for the waters. And then, and then it hit, you got blue is cold water, red hot water, and the green is sewer. And then it's a bunch of new pipe in the places that they're gonna socket from. And that's, that's really it. There's not too much exciting on the plumbing. Y'all, y'all are good with that besides a bunch of new fixtures and hot water to the restrooms with footings.
New plumbing is exciting.
It is pretty exciting.
I think, you know, I've been on the boards with a brief rest since 2010. We've talked about plumbing at Wright a lot. And we've had a lot of money digging out and re-boring lines, because we had such a leak issue underneath that slab. So having all this just eliminates all of that. I'm excited by weird things. Not having the floors rise and all depending on the season. An awesome thing.
Yeah, that's the hope.
How about cutting that torso? Is that a big deal? I see that...
Not, not so much. We already cut it and patched it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Zach...
Matches pretty well?
Yeah, they're doing a pretty good job patching it. There's, like, makes it a lot to do that with from elementary and high school.
Okay.
And it's, they don't really have a whole lot of options there.
Yeah.
It's, there's a lot of spots that's really tough to board, just because it could be so far out.
Okay.
So that's, I think it's the most technological solution.
And we looked at the boring, but you still have to dig pretty deep to start for it.
And you can hit stuff, do either one.
Oh, yeah, weird.
Yeah.
That sounds like a story.
It's not weird. No, no, it's, it, there's stuff underground, so it happens.
It's not where you think it is.
Never labeled. It's never where you think it is. I think Dan's been through some of that. The team's getting good, and people like Dan know a lot of people to get stuff fixed whenever stuff does happen. That's the problem with doing stuff, that something else will happen. Just trust your team to get it fixed. But that's, that's way too fun for this meeting, so I'm gonna keep going. On the mechanical demo, so Happy Old Building had underground ductwork from a long time ago. The other half had dissets from a long time ago. So fixing the part where the ductwork comes under the ground as well and taking out the... They'll have one big grill in the center of the room that's really loud when the HVAC turns on, so we're taking those out and making it look like what we just walked through. Yeah, is it nice being able to hear Jody?
Yes.
And then on this page, blue is the new supply duct. Green will be the return duct. And then the pink red is your exhaust, getting the dirty air out of the restroom, so that it doesn't smell so bad. And then with covering up the windows. And since the HVAC was built for when every all had all those windows, as well as Brittany, and I believe the people that don't know, but they worked out getting the Esser money from the government two years ago to replace all that HVAC. So we're continuing to use all that.
So we're like oversupplied almost, because we're getting better walls?
Yeah. And so we're using that oversupply to feed the hallways rather than pay for new hallways.
Fantastic.
Yep. Here's the electrical demo. So most, most of y'all's lights are, they look in pretty good condition, hardy LED. So we're trying to reuse as many of those as we can. And then a couple areas that are odd, and for some reasons, they never got the LEDs, so we're not using those. We're taking out the old ceiling. And that's really it. And then here is the electrical power. The big thing to look at is you see the little blue, the little signs? That's a plug. And you're going from two plugs in a classroom to about 10. And then you're going from about eight amps of a breaker slot to 40. So you're gonna get five times as much power before you trip breakers.
No more Christmas lights, I know.
You still can't put 10 microwaves on a wall.
I specifically asked.
Yeah, I know, I know. We're working on stuff. We're trying to figure out some low, some low-energy microwaves, but we're not there yet. And then, actually, have some of those. And then you'll see the panels. And we've, we're making an effort to move those panels out of the hallways where we can. Here's some more fun stuff. It just talks about panels, breaker sizes. What if you text it in blue? In the middle is the new stuff. So we're reusing, reusing stuff we set up from Phase One to power Phase Two. Luckily, things have gone to plan. And here is the new lighting layout, very similar to Phase One. Reusing, anytime you see the EX24, that's a reused fixture.
And then you can talk about emergency backup on this.
Yep, and if they got this half hatch on it, it means that's got a battery in it. When the power goes out, you'll have light for another hour. So you have less screaming kids when the power goes out.
And they already worked in the new side that y'all are in a few rooms, so.
Very exciting. That we're on, and we weren't in the complete dark, if those restrooms don't have windows.
Yeah, and that's it, that's it. And if y'all have any questions?
I've actually included one additional page that's not in y'all's pack.
Secret page.
But this is the local design that y'all have seen before in Phase One. It just shows we're putting, you know, fire alarm systems in, we're putting those door status switches will give you an option for that. Just all the same levels of security, fire security, all that good stuff. We're pricing and we're planning on including in this phase as well. So you'll see that as options for like clocks and things, and then whatever comes to fire safety, that will be part of it. So we're, we're working on that, and we're planning on including that in the scope. That's really the last thing I think we've got. Any questions I can answer, or?
I appreciate having these plans on first net.
That was helpful.
It was very helpful. But I think, and questions. Means we've had three days to be able to look and understand, and now it's all been explained, so do appreciate that.
And we got to see in person, though.
Yeah. Yeah, always need to see the before and after. You can kinda see it real time now.
I trust you on the outlook, because I counted it in the room that I sit there.
No, we love, I guess I'll speak, I love boring construction. The more boring we can make it, the less exciting days we have, the better.
Yeah, it's not gonna work really well.
Boring days, good days.
Yeah, yeah. We like boring days of school, too.
We're headed up track on Phase One as far as time.
Yeah, yeah, we're feeling good about time on Phase One. We're thinking probably finish up early midsummer and then move on to Phase Two.
Is that what you expected?
Yeah.
We kinda felt like summer today, you guys, though.
None of these felt summer.
Now it looks great. It could send a mark or something. Phase One looks great, because it's awesome to do.
We appreciate y'all's time and letting us reflect to you. Thank you.
And we're looking forward to walking through the high school, yeah.
Move on to discussion or action items. First item, consideration of possible action on hiring personnel, Mr. Brown.
Okay, I would like to recommend for hire Zabri. I'm trying to blink on her last name. Hasselhoff, thank you. Not sure how I could blink that one. Zabri Hasselhoff, she is a, has a degree. She is going to be coming as a teacher who's gonna give us some help in some remedial Algebra I EOC for students at the high school for a little bit of time. And then mid-March, she's going to become a sixth grade math teacher for us. She's also gonna be helping us out, filling in with some assistant track coaching, where we have an opening right now. She's, will most likely be taking a math position at the high school in the following year, although we're not gonna set that in stone yet, because we're still in the process of reorganizing staff and hiring and seeing where our needs are. But that's the plan right now. So I'd recommend her approval for a teacher contract.
Do you hear a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded to hire, what's her name again?
Zabri Hasselhoff.
Zabri Hasselhoff.
Probationary contract?
Yes.
Probationary.
Probationary, non-certified, non-certified right now.
Non-certified probationary contract. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries six zero. Last item on the agenda, consideration of possible approval of Wright Elementary Construction Plans Phase Two. I hear a motion for approval. Moving and seconded to approve the Phase Two Wright Elementary Construction Plan that we just saw. Any additional discussion?
Is Jody happy?
Jody's very happy.
Perfect. She's happy, I mean.
Other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries six zero. We did make it by eight o'clock. We are.
Thanks, everybody.